This meeting of the Select Board is called to order on June 20th at 6:05 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all of the participants of said recording. Is anyone recording the meeting? Okay. Just for the record, participating this evening are myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. Is remote tonight. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Approval of Minutes. I think we have a couple because we didn't do it last week.
Yep.
Are you ready, Joe?
I am.
Bill, are you okay proceeding with minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I think you should make the motion.
Okay, I move to approve the minutes dated June 6, 2023.
I can say, second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill? Can he vote? Yes.
That was an aye.
Okay. And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously.
I move to approve the minutes dated June 8, 2023.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
There we go.
There we go. And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously.
I move to approve the minutes dated June 12, 2023.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Okay. Next on the agenda is Appointment of Special Police Officers. Potential candidates are Brian Dougherty and Joseph Turco. We have Deputy Chief Ryan O'Shea joining us. Hi, Ryan, how are you?
Good evening, how are you?
I'm well. Thanks for joining.
For letting me speak.
Sure.
Let's give you a little background over the course of January through July, the last five special officers for Hingham. Major Powers, who was a retired police officer from Hingham, who will have to end his tenure beginning of the date. Jim Wells, who's a real estate agent in town, has been with us for like 35 years. Great guy, if you know him from around town. Sort of moved away, it's kind of difficult in this event, 4th of July fireworks, you know, fixture at certain locations. You have Doug Mantle, who just doesn't meet the requirements, but the good news is he is, he didn't take these and review on our list. Another gentleman, Mike McHugh, who says work requirements, and another special officer who's working for the master also, and he seems to say that he's just busy with his full-time job, he just can't commit. So, we just moved those five officers over, asking to appoint two new officers. These gentlemen have quite some experience. We have Ernie working as Deputy Sheriff for the Hingham Sheriff's Department, which is kind of how we, kind of, that we had some openings. Brian Dougherty is one officer, he's a retired Boston police officer. Joseph Turco is another officer, he was a Boston school police officer and also a constable. These guys have a lot of experience. We've done a full background on them, this is what we do for our full-time officers, we now do the same thing for our special officers, so they get a full background, they have a psych exam, they have a medical exam, they have a drug test, you know, references, work history, all those things. We do all the same things we do for a full-time officer, and we're very satisfied with what we found, and we'd like to appoint them. Appointing them now gives us the ability to have them ready for the 4th of July, which is just a few short weeks away. So, we respectfully request that the Board appoint these two gentlemen.
Excellent, thank you. Well, I'm sad to see those who have left. I hope Jim Wells still comes to the parade. We will certainly miss him. But thank you for giving us that background and walking us through the process. I know that it is the same background investigation as a full-time officer, which is relatively new, I think, to this position, but certainly, you know, I think gives us confidence in their abilities. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, could you just share with us the distinction in terms of responsibilities of these appointments of the, you know, the special police officers versus the regular police officers in Hingham?
Absolutely. So, a special police officer doesn't patrol for us, but they will help us with town events and easy on work in the road. But the town events are a big thing, they kind of support us in 4th of July fireworks, Madison Square, the elections, anything like that where we might need an extra hand or two. So, we count on them for those types of events, and we'll see them all working on the 4th of July.
Great. Thank you. No other questions.
Excellent. Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
I have just a quick question. So, Ryan, obviously, these two nominees have the qualifications, but is academy training required now? Do you have to have an academy?
You do either have to have an academy or something called the Bridge Academy, which is kind of a conduit between the full-time academy and the part-time academy, so it's a bit of a bend to it, I guess, still. The end result is that within another year, everyone will have the full-time academy, and it will need that over four.
Great. All right, thanks, Ryan, again. No delays at all. Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, I'm ready to take a motion.
Maybe Bill?
I'm making a motion to appoint Brian Dougherty and Joseph Turco as special police officers to the town of Hingham through October 31st, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan. All right. Next on the agenda is Hingham Affordable Housing Trust Progress and Priorities Update. We have Chair Jack Felvey with us.
Thank you, Liz. Thanks, everyone.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you again. Thanks for making time for this.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. This is our annual reporting to the Select Board on, just an update on the Affordable Housing Trust activities. I want to, and you can keep me short, or let me go as much as you want, I'll, I can do three minutes.
Not quite as strict as the moderator, but.
Let me get the clock going here.
I want to start with three thank yous. Thanks to the Select Board for being really supportive on affordable housing trust issues. Thanks to the Town for providing excellent staff support. We have Jen Orim as our lead support now, and a new second, Donna Thompson, who's just been added, and she was added with lightning speed after we lost Eleanor. So, delighted that she's on board. And third, thanks to the CPC who have given us great support now in two of the last three years, and I can say we're fully funded for what is we do, and now we've got to just go find a way to carry through the mission. So, big perspective for the Affordable Housing Trust is the master plan sets a pretty specific goal, and that is we should be providing five units of affordable housing added to the subsidized housing inventory a year for the next 10 years, so that's 50 housing units. The housing, the 2021 housing plan sets the number at 250, but that's from all sources, including private. But in any event, we should be adding a substantial number of homes to the SHI, even though we are above the 10%, as everybody in the room knows, so that's a great place to be in terms of 40B. So, we've had a really productive year, particularly on the single-family homes front, because of a lot of work and momentum done during prior years. So, this is, the good news is this is going to be a banner year for us in terms of number of single-family homes that we'll be putting the home in the hands of lower-income occupants and bringing it to Hingham, so that's just great news. 2931 Road Circle should be sold early this fall or late this summer, followed closely by 23 Ridgewood and then 270 Central. Add the two homes over on Whiting Street that the Habitat for Humanities is now finishing off, and that's a total of six homes that will be newly sold and occupied by early 2024, and five of those are new to the SHI, one's already on, the Ridgewood Street condo's already on. So, that's, as I said, a culmination of, I'd say, three to four years of effort by the Housing Trust, by predecessors, and, you know, so it's one to two a year, which is pretty good, but it's not going to get us five a year over the next 10 years. We are, we, as I said, are well-funded now to buy a home or two and improve them. That's the good news. The bad news is that the market is brutal, and we are watching it daily. We have a Realtor who's a member of the Trust who literally, before a house hits the market or within a day, we know about it. We've seen a few homes, like starter homes, come on the market now. We hear a lot about median prices, but starter homes are about $700,000 in all kinds of conditions, and they go fast. So, we've seen a couple come on, and we think, oh, it's a busy street, perhaps there won't be as much demand, maybe the price will drop, it's gone. So, we've had, we've been watching and not finding opportunities to buy and improve so far. We're going to keep watching it through the rest of the year. We're hesitant, you know, we're careful about recommending an expensive purchase to the Select Board because we need to be prudent stewards. So far, the homes that we've been, you know, purchasing, improving, and then reselling have been costing somewhere between $150,000 and, say, $300,000 per home, net-net, in terms of, you know, getting a home into the hands of, you know, a wonderful, deserving family. If we buy in the $700,000 range, it's going to be more like $400,000 to $500,000. And we may come to a point where we're going to be asking to do that, we're not there yet, and we'll, we'll be communicating. We also, given the lack of homes available on the market, staff called through tax title properties owned by the Town to see whether any of those are potential single-family opportunities. We've narrowed the list, a fairly long list, down to two potential properties, and we're going to be coming back to the Select Board soon, asking for permission to enter the properties and conduct per tests and see whether either of them will perk. So, those are possibilities that we're going to work on. But the big picture from the Affordable Housing Trust's perspective is multifamily, and we're not going to meet any of those, you know, loftier goals without finding multifamily opportunities. The Select Board knows because we've been before you on a related issue that the Housing Trust is interested in thinking about an expansion at Lincoln School and has been for some time, and there's, you know, substantial expansion one could do there without disruption, and that has just been a wonderful asset for the Town. But as the Select Board also knows, the Windows Replacement Project has identified a number of other potential capital needs that had been thought to be three-to-five-to-ten-year expenses, which may need to get pulled forward because of leaking and potential issues with the envelope. So, we're trying to coordinate our thinking about, can we do expansion there with the capital investment that's needed there, and that would have to be addressed as a package, you know, that sounds daunting, and hopefully, it's something we can make progress on in the next year and not have it drift for too long. So, that's the one-year term opportunity for us, and after that, we're, we've had some conversations with Art Roberts, and we will continue to talk to Town staff about whether we can identify any other multifamily opportunities around town. I think there's very good support in the Town for, continue to do well on affordable housing, and Affordable Housing Trust is really grateful that it has the level of support that it does. So, beyond those two key focuses of single-family and multifamily, we had to work, you know, quite a bit on the ADU Study Committee Initiative this year, and that worked through, we put a lot of energy into that. We think that that process kind of highlighted the need to do better at communicating and kind of community relations than we've done. I think we've kind of let our heads down doing our work, and I feel like on an issue like that one, both sides came into it with positions before there'd been a conversation about, about, you know, what potential problems are, are there problems, et cetera. So, we're going to try to do better about doing community outreach this week, this year, which is supposed to be part of our mission anyway, and, you know, hear from people, hear what concerns people and what people are comfortable with, and maybe kind of get our message across of why we think this community can stay the wonderful community that it is and be a little more inclusive on affordable housing. So, that's, that's my update. If there's anything you all would like us to know and hear and be thinking about, we'd love to hear about it. We get to see Liz every week, and we know, Bill and Joe, you've served on the Affordable Housing Trust, and we really appreciate your involvement.
Yes. Well, thank you, Jack, and thank you to the whole Trust. It's inspiring to be a liaison to that, to that group. You do such tremendous work, and it's so important. I'm thrilled to see the houses that are coming available. Can I keep driving by the Habitat for Humanity houses, just waiting for?
They're great.
Yeah, they look, they look great.
As a couple people have said to us, those are like the American dream, right? I mean, those are opportunities to give somebody a nice leg up and join the community, so we're really looking forward to make those happen.
Yes, yes.
Thanks, Liz.
Yeah, thank you.
And I should have started by thanking the Trust members who are, as Liz says, awesome.
They're phenomenal, yes.
But I'm speaking for all of us, I couldn't thank ourselves.
Joe, do you have any questions?
I do, but also, I don't, when I was the liaison, those meetings were the best meetings. So, thank you for leading this group.
As a great friend.
I do have a question. The new multifamily zoning requirements for the MBTA, the new state law that is requiring multifamily zoning to be permitted, are you working with any of the Town or even private developers? Because there is going to, there's a requirement for the multifamily to be available. I agree with you that that is the key going forward. I just didn't know if there's any coordination between your committee and other committees, either in Town or with private developers.
So, there hasn't been yet. I was reading some stuff on the MBTA Communities Initiative today, and there will be. I should have mentioned that. I mean, that, you know, I don't know how much movement they'll be on that in the next year, but we'll start to get involved in that.
Yeah.
Process to the extent that we can. I think we won't be a driver, but we'll certainly be interested in creating some affordable opportunities.
Hopefully, you'll be an active passenger.
Exactly. That would work well.
Great. No other questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Bill, do you have any questions for Jack, for his leave?
Yeah, a couple, Jack, first of all, thanks for your great work. You know, it's great to hear the update, and very happy to hear that you've given Lake Hurrah sufficient funding for the Trust. Definitely been a priority for the Board for the last couple of years, and I know the money cannon is high this year, so it's wonderful that, you know, we're at that level of funding. Did I hear you say that we're buying houses from $150 to $300, or are we selling them at that price for the residents, who live there?
So, what I'm trying to get at was, that's kind of the net cost to the Trust so far. So, sometimes we get a property through the Town, and all we've got to do is put some renovation money into it and sell. Sometimes we bought a property and are, have sort of forecasted what it's going to cost to improve it and sell, but that's the ballpark of what it's cost net to the Trust so far.
So, is that basically the differential between buy and sell?
Buy improvement and sell, yeah.
Right, with the adjusted basis.
Right. So, as an example, the Road Circle, are they $220? Is that right?
Yeah, the sale price.
The sale price.
Right, right. So, that's one where we, we acquired them before my time, and then we've had, you know, moderate improvement costs, but because we had a relatively low cost to purchase, and we can sell each for $220, you know, we kind of do okay. It costs some money.
Yeah.
But in this current housing market, the floor has really gone up.
It's going up.
As well as the median.
Definitely.
Yeah, I was going to comment, the challenge, yeah, the challenging the Trust is going to have now, because that, you know, houses in Hingham going so high, it's going to be, it's going to really actual, I mean, it's resources to be able to, to, you know, transact these houses. So, a lot of work to add here. The five, the five-year goal is fantastic. Hopefully, the margin will cool a little bit and get us there, but hey, two years is great too. We can give and make a difference, so I really appreciate your work, Jack. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, and thanks for your support.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Awesome. Thank you, Jack.
Thanks for the question.
All right, excellent. I know he's running off to his own meeting. Okay. Next on the agenda, to consider approval of a temporary agreement with Frank and Nancy Mellon, 182 North Street, for temporary access and construction activities to install 14 bollards within the right-of-way. And I know, we have JR, Tom, do you want to start?
I can kick it off, maybe, and we can bring others in as needed. So, this is a request, actually, of the homeowners, Frank and Nancy Mellon, over at 182 North Street, for a temporary license agreement for access and construction in our, in the Town's right-of-way. In essence, is what's happening here. Several years ago, three, maybe, two, two years ago, there was an accident at the home, and thankfully, no one was hurt too seriously, but it really damaged perhaps the oldest home in Town, the Samuel Lincoln Cottage, built somewhere around 1650, is my understanding. So, it's a unique historic asset for sure. It's a heavily pedestrian, heavy pedestrian corridor. Obviously, the home is built almost right at the edge of the sidewalk, so it's in a unique location just because of its age. That's the way things, that's where the cows walked probably back in the day, so.
And the trolleys.
And the trolleys, right, right. So, so the home is unfortunately positioned, but it's the way it is. And we want to protect the asset, we want to protect the pedestrians, certainly the occupants of the building. Had they been in that front room during that accident, I want to think of what could have happened. So, the idea that the Melons had was to design a bollard system that would stop vehicles from hitting the home in the event that they left that turn. So, the home is also, I should say, is right on a curve on North Street. So, they, at their own expense, acquired a design for a bollard system in front of the home. They then took that through the historic boards with Andrea's help to identify a couple of things, the appropriateness of the bollards and what they might look like, how many would be needed, et cetera, and all that, but then also funding. So, the initial plan was to request funding from the Green Bush Mitigation Fund to the, for about half of the construction, of the construction cost. And then the other half was going to come from CPC. So, that was our plan all along, and then as we get into the CPC process, it's determined that CPC is actually, it's not an appropriate funding source for this type of project, so we had to scrap that plan. They had received the 50% funding from Green Bush initially, but now they're still 50% of the value of the project short. So, Andrea brought it back to the Historic Commission, who reconsidered it and very recently funded that second half of the construction project. So, so now they have a final design, they have it through the historic work, the boards, and they have full funding available. The granting, the grant from the Green Bush account was granted to the Melons directly. So, what we need to have happen is they need to build this, this structure in our right-of-way and then give it to the Town. That's what's contemplated in the agreement before you. So, they'll actually be responsible for the contractor coming in, building the thing. Upon completion, when it's inspected and approved, it gets turned over, per this agreement, to the Town for ownership. And I think that's where we're at. It's kind of, it's a two-year summary in about 30 seconds.
Yes.
But it seems pretty, pretty.
Yes, that's helpful.
Historically, because we have restrictions on the house.
Do you want to come up to the microphone, just so everybody can hear you?
Sure.
Is that okay?
They feel they have to, yeah.
You don't have to.
Add to Tom's timeline, I will say it was, I believe, last year that the Melons brought this to the traffic committee as well.
Yes.
I'm sorry, that's right.
And so, the traffic committee passed it with no objection, rather, there was a majority with no objection and one vote against.
Okay.
And the one vote against, my understanding, was about snow removal, and JR, you and I have talked about that, and we believe that there's, there's a way to accommodate snow removal with the bollards at the side of the road.
Yes, okay. So, yes, the traffic committee voted and approved in July of 2022.
That's right.
And then the Historical Commission has most recently voted on it and the use of the.
For the full construction cost.
For the construction, the funding.
Exactly.
Go ahead.
Frank and Nancy Mellon, 182 North Street, obviously. Not really too much more we can add. Tom here has done a great job hitting the summary and the highlights of everything's happened here the last couple of years. I think I just really wanted to reiterate the point of how often we've had difficulties at that, that particular home. In the 35 years, I don't know what's been in the material, you probably looked at, but really quickly, in the 35 years we've been there, we've had five separate incidents of cars on our property. One that slammed into a telephone pole on the west side, fortunately, he hit the pole. Fortunately for us, he hit the pole.
He would have hit the house, otherwise.
Two of them that have rolled right on the sidewalk, we're watching television, and they're six feet away, just going down the sidewalk, hitting the telephone pole on the easterly side, one of which went past the pole and almost hit the neighbor's house.
And through the garden.
And through the garden. One that snapped the post off in front of her house on the sidewalk, leaned down and sort of just about tipped into the side of her house. Her gas tank broke, gas poured all over the place, the police were there, our college aide's son was not very happy about being on the sidewalk in the snow. I won't tell you what he was muttering.
2AM.
I won't tell you what he was muttering to the driver of the car, but again, obviously, the worst one was two years ago, when 18 feet of wall was destroyed, floor was destroyed, furniture was destroyed, and as Tom said, it's really fortunate that we weren't in that room, which we normally are, and also, there wasn't anyone on the sidewalk. So, what we're trying to do, because of the way we have to install them in the right-of-way between the curb and the sidewalk, is one, because we have to do it that way to not mess our foundation, but also, two, it will protect pedestrians as well as our house. Pedestrians constantly on that, that road, constantly, dog walkers, children with, going to two and front bus, the bus stops, joggers, walkers, mothers, fathers with astrolers, it's just a constant, constant event, and if we don't do something, I'm afraid we're going to have a challenge there. One of these days is going to be worse than what happened to us, so. That was really my main points, and I just wanted to say.
And historic New England is thrilled with the bollards.
Oh, good, good.
True, the concept of them, at least, but that's basically what.
And the looks of them.
What we wanted to say, so.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you for being here. Certainly, we've talked about safety on North Street and in the downtown area, and it's certainly a big concern for us, certainly the homes, but also pedestrians and people on the sidewalk, so this, I think this is an important project for many reasons. Joe, do you have questions or comments?
Well, I absolutely agree in terms of the safety issue. It's very important. I really, I really appreciate you bringing this forward. As you've done it, have, have you received any input from neighbors, positive or negative?
All positive.
All positive, because we have input from four or five of the neighbors, and all of them have said, why haven't you, we, all done this?
Right. And JR, in the traffic committee, were there responses from neighbors?
There were no negative responses from neighbors.
Were there any positive responses?
Positive response, right?
I recall a couple of the Melons' neighbors showed up to support their efforts.
Great. And Tom, how will maintenance of the bollards be handled going forward?
Yeah, so, we were talking about that. It's why, it's, you know, maintenance for these, these are funded through Green Bush, so if, in the event they get hit, let's say, so another car comes through, takes two of them out, the intent, we just spent 30, or $60,000 of mitigation funds, town mitigation funds, on building these things and putting them in there to protect, again, the historic asset and pedestrians. If they gets knocked, if some of them get knocked out, I think the intent would be to request Green Bush for funding to replace them. If for some reason Green Bush can't, then I'll have a chat with the Department of Public Works and see if there's money available to do that. I don't know that there will be, I can't promise there will be. It'll be a specific, you know, time-specific decision, but I don't think the Town, and this is what I was trying to portray to the Melons, through Andrea earlier, I don't anticipate the Town would walk away from the investment of, you know, this particular investment.
So, I mean, there's two types of maintenance. One is if they get hit, and I think our first recourse would probably be the insurance company of whatever vehicle.
Yeah.
Hit it. But.
They are crash tested?
Yep.
So it takes a.
250-pound car traveling 40 miles an hour.
In three or four feet.
Three feet and three ounces.
Now, I mean, I mean, that, I mean, those sorts of incidents are, you know, not unique to your home area. And I know it's something that Bill has been focusing on to make sure that we're, we're dealing with, with traffic in, in the downtown. So I understand that type of maintenance. I'm thinking of the second type, which is either rust or over time, it gets, you know, something on it.
Sure. So a few things. My understanding is the Melons will take care of the grass strip, weed whacking, mowing, keeping, keeping the grass strip in good repair in and around the bollards, and to the extent they need to be painted or something, our Public Works family would do that.
Okay.
Steel underneath and cast iron on the top.
Right.
And, but ultimately, what is being made becomes town property?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And, and one other note, the, the traffic committee, I think wisely required that, I think it's every, every other JR, or there were, I think, five bollards total, required a reflective strip placed on the bollard so that the vehicles would see them at night.
The first, third, and fifth from each side.
Okay.
I'll ask what may be a naive question. Is there a reason every bollard does not have a reflective strip on it?
Well, they're only three feet apart, so four feet apart, something like that. So I think that was unnecessary, but. JR, you can't hear you.
I mean, is that a cost issue or just not necessary?
Peace doesn't work, but adding, simply adding more isn't just going to dissuade the driver.
So what I'm hearing is.
Did I lose you?
You're coming in spotty. So am I correct? What you're saying is that in, in the traffic committee's view, more reflective strips are not necessary?
Correct.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you.
Bill, do you have any questions?
I was going to ask Tom, why do they become town property because of, because they're on town land?
Yes, that, that's why we're doing that. They're, they're becoming town property per the agreement that the Melons and we are signing today. It's built into this, this agreement that you're signing today.
Okay. All right, Bill, I'm glad we've been kind of discussing this for a while and please report.
So, okay, so we're actually voting to authorize you, Tom, to sign the agreement that the Melons have already signed?
I believe that's right. Yes, it is, yes.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Are we ready? I'm ready to take a motion if you.
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the temporary license agreement with Frank A. Mellon and Nancy C. Mellon of 182 North Street, Hingham, to install 14 bollards along the edge of the sidewalk within the right of way in front of 182 North Street, Hingham.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
An aye and aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for coming in. We're getting there. Thank you. I know, it has been a long time. And it's stressful and traumatic. And thank you for hanging in there with us. I think we came to the right solution for everybody. So thank you.
Your, your persistence really pays off.
Thank you, Andrea, for all your help, too. Okay. Next on the agenda, Hingham Maritime Center update. We have Amy Conley with us. Absolutely.
Do you happen to have my slideshow?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Do we have the musical accompaniment?
I can sing and dance.
Very much.
I want to start by thanking you very much for fitting us into your agenda. We truly appreciate the opportunity to present, and we are very proud to share the story of HMC's success during the 2022 season. So I'm going to get myself back.
It's up on the screen when you're ready.
Can you see it? It's hard with the sun.
Yeah, I was just going to bring myself into my own. So if we go to slide two, our, HMC's mission for over 53 years has been boding for all. Hingham Maritime Center has offered sailing, rowing, maritime education, and community access to Hang, on Hingham's picturesque waterfront. We've taught sailing and rowing to over 10,000 participants. We started with just sailing. Years later, we brought in rowing. And we foster self-reliance, teamwork, physical fitness, and solutions-oriented approach to thousands of people. We really have done a good job with both our youth and our adults. If you go to the next slide, our core values, we are committed to safety satisfaction, respect for the environment, and respect for the community. The third slide, blue, blue space. I like to think that it's intuitive that we all know that being out on the water is good for our souls. It is good for us both mentally and physically. And there is actually a lot of research, and that research is growing, that shows us exactly what those benefits are. But some of them are that it helps boost human health and well-being. These exposures particularly benefit children, which is our largest population that we serve. And accessibility to and usage of blue spaces promotes social connections through recreation. So we have a lot of adult programming where adults get to be together with other adults and get away from the daily grind, so to speak.
Get away from their children, too, sometimes.
Well, they send their children to us to get away, and then they come to get away. So the next slide is participants. We served over 960 participants among eight of our sailing classes in this past summer. We offered everything from beginner and intermediates up into a, an advanced race class that we've, we brought into the fall. We hosted it during the summer and then again into the fall for the high school kids. They, those kids travel all over. They race in regattas, they sail out of not only our bay, but other bays locally, and they really get a lot out of that. For rowing, we, again, 960 participants, that was split between sailing and rowing. Those classes for youth, we have youth row and high school development, which really fits well with the high school teams, because we train these kids in the off-season, basically for Hingham High School. A lot of those kids cross over. We have 50 rowers trained with our high school development team, perfecting techniques for both their high school rowing careers and then going forward into their college careers. In total, we enabled 407 youth sailors and 261 youth rowers last year gain access to Hingham Harbor. As you know, it's not accessible to everybody. You have to be a member of a yacht club or have a boat or be part of a marina like Bear Cove in order to get out on that harbor. And we provide this thoroughway to get out there for these people. Facts and figures, we had 46 adult sailors. We were only limited by the fact that we couldn't, our capacity was filled. We plan on expanding that as there is a need for adult learn to sail in our community. And we can see it, we get calls constantly. So we're working to expand that for this coming year. We had 19 adults learn to row, 15 adult coastal, in coastal singles, which are a single-person rowing shell. We had 82 rowers in quads. That's a four-person rowing boat. We had 41 in our eight sweep, which is an eight-person boat, and four people do spring or a gang. So 207 adult participants total. Slide eight. We are the home of Hingham High School sailing and rowing teams. We do a great job of getting our docks in early for these teams. We give them access to the wharf, we get them out on the water in March, early in the season, when it's not the easiest thing. Our insurance doesn't like it, our, you know, it's, it's scary for us because of weather and everything turning up. But we make sure that those kids get out there, and they're so grateful. And just being down there, you can see how much joy that it brings them to be out on that water in early March. I don't think these kids would stop sailing.
Yes.
If, if they had a say. We also paired up with them for fundraising efforts for Harbor Feast. We paired up with Hingham High School Rowing Association and Hingham High School Sailing Association, and we hosted a fundraiser on the night of the fireworks. It happened to coincide this year. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. I'll speak more to it in a minute. In 2022, we had 40 paid employees, over 20 sailing and rowing volunteers, and 13 volunteer board members. Our expansive programming allows us to employ many youth, local youth and young adults. Many of these employees learn to sail or row at Hingham Maritime Center, and they currently either participate in Hingham High School sailing and rowing. So there's a big crossover there. Our volunteer board members for the 2022 season, Liza McKinnon was our board president, Tom Curtis here to my right is our vice president, Nancy Kerber, our secretary, Marnie Owens, our treasurer, Tim Bradel, Jay Brasser, Sturt English, Kristen Feely, Zach Jones, Jonas, Linda Kutsch, Scott Menard, Ed Morris, and Nina Villanova were all active in the 22 season. Our fleet, we have over 100 boats, 72 of which, I'm sorry, I'm slide 12. 72 of which are sailboats. We had five Rhodes 19s, which, if you don't know, is a big boat. It's 19 feet. We have one Hunter, which is about 14 feet, 44 Prams and Opties. These are the boats that teach our littlest students. They are, Liz knows, she gave us one. They're just small eight-foot boats that we maintain and keep up, and they help us teach young kids from seven to 12 how to sail. We have three turnarounds, 12 420s, two lasers, three Zess and two Quests. Next row, next slide, we have 25 rowing shells, or we did in 2022. All of this has changed now. We had four quads. We have an eight-plus sweep, which is an eight-person boat. It is ginormous. We had 16 single shells and four double shells. As far as trailers and powerboats are concerned, we have 19 boat trailers, nine powerboats. Our brand-new dock system came in, but before that, we had 16 docks and one gangway, and we own a Chevy Silverado for a truck. All are in good shape. 2022 partnerships, we partnered with Sunset Point, if you don't know what that is. It's a Catholic charities camp for, mostly for children, inner-city children to come and spend a week out in Hull, getting some fresh air out on the water, doing things that they don't normally get to do. Hingham Maritime had volunteered to take these kids sailing twice a week. So we had staff taking them out sailing, and watching their faces light up was absolutely amazing. This is something that they had never gotten to experience before, and I think that it will leave its mark on them. We are partnering again with them this year, and we're actually expanding our offerings for them. And they are coming during the day while our wharf is busy, so they get to really feel like they're participating even more. Last year, we had had them at night, and they were kind of on their own, so they'd show up at the wharf, and the wharf was quiet. And now they'll come during this busy time where everybody is, it's a hustle and a bustle. Chamberlain International School, it's a co-educational therapeutic boarding and day school. They came and we provided some special rowing programs for them and got them out. It's a year-round school, so those kids do go in the summer, and we are happy to accommodate them. Back to Harbor Feast, we sold 341 tickets to our annual fundraiser. It raised money for Hingham Maritime, Hingham High School Sailing, and Hingham High School Rowing. As I said, we were delighted and prideful to join up with them to put this event on this year. Seeing that we have so much overlap, it just made sense for us to collaborate and to put this party on together. We also gave away another 58 tickets in sponsorship, and we had 31 local businesses come and participate, which was amazing. So in conclusion, for over 50 years, 53 to be exact, HMC has worked through the challenges associated with running maritime programs and providing equitable waterfront access in Hingham and the surrounding communities. We have countless volunteers, donors, passionate community members that have ensured the success of Hingham Maritime Center. We'd like to thank the town for our long and successful working relationship. I'd also like to thank the board, who, without them, we wouldn't be here. They really, their time is, the time that they put in is amazing, and, and they're the reason that we're so successful today. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, thank you, Amy, for all you've done. And I know you have a very strong and dynamic board, Tom and Liza, of course. I'm sorry she couldn't be here tonight. You've done a wonderful job collaborating, as you said, with many organizations, and the way you've, you've partnered with the high school teams. We really appreciate. They're a tremendous asset to not only the, the students on those teams, but our whole community. So thank you. And Joe, I know, is, Rose there? He's, he's one of the adults in the number.
Last year, I think I only subbed. I wasn't really.
Oh, you didn't make the cut?
Didn't, didn't.
You hope you'll come back this year.
Didn't make the time. I can make the cut. Now, let's, let's be clear about that. But I will say, you know, Hingham is a harbor town, and this is exactly what the town needs to have, and is really proud that we do have your organization doing what you do. I, I have done the, the rowing program, and you've, one of the nice things, other than being out on the water, which is, as you said, is fantastic, is getting some of the kids as Cox's. So if you can make sure you have the smallest people coming out to Cox on the boats, that's, that's really important. And, you know, I've seen the, the high school kids down there, and it makes a difference. And I think you really are making a difference in the town.
Thank you.
I think Liz and I were both at the Harbor Feast last year. And well done.
Yeah, great.
I think one of the things that I didn't touch on in reflecting right now is that we also provide scholarships. And I'm very proud of what we did in scholarships last year. There are people that can't afford.
Sure.
Even our nonprofit pricing, and we were able to provide either 50%, 75%, or 100% scholarships to a handful of people last year that reached out and wanted to participate. So.
Wonderful.
We're not only just for the general public, we are there to support all of the community.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. That's appreciated. Bill, do you have, do you want to bring down the slides, actually? Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
Can't hear you.
Can he not unmute?
Sorry, when I, when I muted myself in the presentation, I couldn't unmute. No, I just wanted to say there's a lot of great things happening at Maritime Center. It's a wonderful organization. Obviously, custom warranty provides with the, with the students there, the adults rowing, and the employees have all the great things happening. So thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Tom, for the life of other great people.
Excellent. Did you want to add anything, Tom?
So I guess if there was one thing.
Do you mind coming up here, just so people online can hear, Bill can hear you a little better?
Hi, Tom Curtis. I'm the VP of the Board of the Maritime Center. Amy did a fantastic job presenting, and of everything that she mentioned, there was one thing that I just wanted to expand on, and that was the employees of the Maritime Center. Most of the employees are former students that have grown up with the program and are now working teenage age, and they, this becomes their home. And they go through high school, spending their summers down at the Maritime Center, and they go to college, and they come back, and they work for freshman summer, sophomore summer. All of a sudden, they're presented with, oh, maybe I need to get an internship and not be spending my time on the wharf. And we have some of these people right now, and they're telling me about this, like, internal conflict that they have, that they love being there so much that they're considering, you know, putting off their internship or doing a different program that would allow them to continue to participate in the Maritime Center. And, and these kids, our head of sailing, Ivan Francis, the perfect example, he went on to go to college, graduated college, he's teaching in the Cape, and he comes back to Hingham in the summer, lives at his parents' house, I believe, to, just to work at the Maritime Center. And, you know, I grew up here in town, and I had a paper route, and I, and I worked at the country club, and I worked at the Maritime Center. And these jobs are kind of the foundation of our youth, and get them off their phones, and get them out the door, and interacting with the community. And I think that's one of the greatest kind of underlying assets of HMC and what it provides to this community. So I just wanted to make a mention of that.
Definitely, yes.
I, I would just add that, you know, it's incredible, just me personally, when I go down to rowing, and we have collegiate athletes who are coaching us. It, it makes a difference. It's, it's, it's really great.
Yeah, I think my first job at the Maritime Center was as a, you know, 15-year-old teaching adult sailing. So it, it, actually, the dichotomy works pretty nicely. So, and thank you guys for your support.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, thank you for. Thank you. Well, thank you for coming in and giving us an update. We certainly appreciate it.
Liz, I have one quick question for you. Just for everyone. So as a background to this question, I'm very good friends with the town manager in Ducksbury. I was told two years ago by one of the coaches that the rowing team would beat Ducksbury, and I'm wondering if that's happened yet.
Working on it.
All right, we're working on that.
If you're, if you're speaking about us as Americans and not as a high school...
No, the high school rowing team.
We are trying to get together some, some sort of race, just to be fair.
I'm taking an unfair amount of, you know, guff from my friend, so. We need to win.
Do I hear there's a wager going on?
If only it were a wager.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? I don't think so. Okay, excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you again for being here. I appreciate it. All right. Next on the agenda are end-of-year transfers, which I know they're not all prepared yet, so I'm proposing moving that to next week's agenda. Everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is discussion and potential vote regarding a potential waiver under Chapter 268A, Section 19.
I can, I can tee that up.
Tom?
Sure. So Susan Murphy is asking for a finding from the board. It's, the issue is described in the letter in your packets. There is no direct financial interest on Susan's part, and the select board would just need to waive the conflict, conflict of interest. That's what, that's what the vote is for.
Yes. So am I correct that it, there's no financial gain of consequence, like, of any substantial consequence? Or it's zero? Do we know?
I was told that there is no financial interest.
Okay. Okay. Joe, do you have any questions?
I mean, I've discussed this with Susan, and I'm satisfied that there's not a conflict here.
Okay. Bill, do you have any questions or comments about this?
A little bit, so I'm, I'm very fine, and I'm gonna go support it. But is, what is the conflict? I read this over twice. Is, is the client doing business with the town, or they're potentially doing business with the town?
I believe the, Joe, if you, you can answer.
Go ahead.
I believe, I believe that the Hirsch family down in the shipyard is doing business with someone else that is represented by Dane Torpe. Susan is a member of Dane Torpe, she's an employee there, and she is working on behalf of the town with the Hersh's, and wants to make sure that there's no conflict if we're speaking with her counterpart in interactions with the town. Did I say that right, Joe?
You did.
Okay, all right.
So, so Bill...
Let's, I'm just trying to make sure there's a conflict, but yeah, some conflict.
So there's...
Yeah.
So I think there's two levels. One is, as a matter of professional responsibility, to the extent that her firm, that someone else in her firm might be involved in a transaction where the interests of the town could be affected. She needs to disclose that conflict and to make sure that we're aware of it, and she's obviously going to be a zealous representative for our interests, and whoever else might be involved in a transaction that could affect the town, they're gonna do whatever they want to do. But she wanted to make it clear that we're aware of that and that she will zealously protect the interests of the town. The second issue is whether or not there is a financial interest. The financial interest arguably would be for her firm, to the extent that it got fees, and she disclosed she has no ownership interest in her firm.
Makes sense, okay. I'm confident with the board.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? I'm, I'm comfortable with this. I'm ready to take a motion.
So I'll move that the board waive any conflict of interest under the Massachusetts rules of professional conduct and make a determination under Mass General laws, Chapter 268A, Section 19, that the financial interest of Susan C. Murphy is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the employee for the matter described in the disclosure form attached here, too.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously.
And just making it clear, when the resolution refers to employee, she is classified as a special municipal employee because of her involvement with the town. She's not an actual, she's not on our payroll.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. Next on the agenda are appointments. I don't believe we have any this evening. I think we'll have a, a good list for next week, hopefully, as we're getting closer to our June thirtieth deadline here.
Yes.
Public comment? I don't see anyone. Okay. Town Administrator and Select Board reports. Art, do you want to start?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Tom?
Just want to let everyone know, we had our groundbreaking ceremony over at the Public Safety Facility late last week or mid-last week. That project is underway, twenty-month project, we're expecting it to be built mid to late 2025. We should be occupying it, which is very exciting. Our police and fire department is eagerly awaiting that date, so.
Yes.
Just keep everybody up to date.
Exciting day, for sure. Bill?
I have to do it for Amy.
Okay, Joe?
Liz, do you want to report on Juneteenth?
No, go ahead.
We can both report if you want, because it was really...
Yes, I think we were all there.
It was, it was an incredible event. The turnout, I think, was probably double from last year. The weather turned out to be fantastic. The community feeling was just overwhelming, and it was really nice to see the town of Hingham and neighboring towns, to have residents show up to support Juneteenth. And the food trucks were also very good.
They were very good, yes. The entertainment was excellent, there was lots of activities for kids. So a special thank you to the Hingham Unity Council and the sponsors for putting that on. It was a wonderful, free community event, really accessible to all, so thank you. I know a lot happened last week.
Yeah.
Groundbreaking, Citizens Police Academy graduation, where else were we?
Yeah. It's a blur.
It was very busy, I know, very busy.
Very busy week.
And we have a lot going on this next week, and then, of course, the parade on July fourth. I think today is the last day for the Fifty Flags Campaign, if people want to get in on that fundraiser. It's a very, it's a festive way to support the parade, where on Saturday, our, our local students will be installing flags in yards per your request, so definitely look that up if you're interested.
We also had the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day.
Yes.
At the Senior Center.
The Senior Center, yes. Jennifer Young did a great job. That's the first time we've had, had that event. It was very informative. We, Chief Jones was there, and people, it turned into a bit of a Q and A. I think people got a lot out of it, so I hope that's something that will continue. But it was nice to mark the event, for sure. Okay, I think that's it. Take a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.